Oh, and I was supposed to say that. Yeah. Yeah, she told me now, and then I couldn't remember what it was.
Majority of it.
I think that's what I'm trying to do.
Were we within that?
We knew what the problem was.
We're like 101 days.
Yes. How would you do that? Council would?
Yeah.
That would be probably what's going to be the floor. Is it, um, non-binding?
For local non-binding.
Yeah.
Would you do that?
Yes, you would do that, because then I would be concerned to the kind of within a certain amount of time that would get all about.
And that's it.
It's like a wedding.
Talk to them.
I know.
How are we doing, people? All right? Oh, I'm just wondering. After tonight, I'm on vacation for 10 days, so.
Where are you now?
Over in Virginia. Where is Bart?
Oh, my goodness.
We do it every year, family, family thing. Yep. Yep. And those who can make it, make it. They don't go, usually go for a whole week, but they make it for two or three or four days, it's the places there. And it used to be everybody did, but with everybody's work schedules, now the kids own all the summer jobs. It's a little bit more difficult.
I know. It's amazing how families come up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the big flip.
It gets along very well. Nobody wants to be by.
Stop the sign there. Okay.
Don't do a long meeting, I guess.
It's not sitting there.
His name's Garfield.
Did you sign down there?
There's a whole bunch of stuff down there.
He gets along with everything.
He'll take you a minute, don't worry about it. He signs so. Excuse me, did you sign there? Oh, we have to, you have to sign that one, we have to sign that.
Don't take this wrong.
I would go over the.
Just not from the state, so they don't know.
I've never really. Chanters and after 18. Have they gotten one of them? Maybe I should try and find out. Start going these different tracks. Get a plan. A cold one, or a little splash in the water. But, uh, remind me of that.
Sure. It is a commercial.
It is commercial?
Not late.
Thank you.
Commercial, but it's each one.
Yeah, okay. But that, i- 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 if it's just a change of use.
Oh, yeah.
He would still go to some Sony board or playing board.
Uh, yeah, some board, change of problem.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Greg. I owe you one.
Anytime.
Yes. I thought it was. It just be the. Yes.
The, uh. With that email that Lucy sent out, John Hill, I'll make.
Oh, he, he asked why he goes through.
It was a while ago, it shot, shot short. John Hill died like a couple weeks ago, right? Or a couple months?
Yeah, I tried to look it up, too, but I didn't.
Can we even imagine it, or? I don't know, we could, you know, I just, uh.
I thought that was.
Wow.
Terrible idea.
Gee, thanks.
My percentage, yeah, wow. My percentage is 23 percent. What, very easy. To keep time. Oh. I'll put the phone out. I'll do it until I go dead.
Uh, this is, uh.
Hello, actually.
No, this is flooding. Anything happen, please?
No, we cannot understand. I think the best thing is to, for you, try to be a little closer to people that have large volumes, rather away.
Okay.
Yeah, right. I was supposed to be smart.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to read this.
You want me to?
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I hear you, man.
Get that other, hold on, I got to check.
Well, feel like I'm sitting in my.
I know.
Yeah, that was the holdup. You're probably right.
Are you okay?
Yep.
We're alive.
We're good.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. This meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, omnipotent, God's rule.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yeah, um.
Sure.
I know, uh, a few people knew John Hill, who was a former councilman.
Mayor, if you sit back, we'll be able to hear you. Can't hear what you're saying.
Much better? How's? Okay. Well, I'll just throw it back here. Thank you, Greg. I learned from you. A few months ago, uh, one of our former councilmen passed away, John Hill, who was an integral part of this governing body for many years, and I just want to make mention of that. And we, uh, you know, just found out about it the other day, so we'd just like to have a moment of silence for John, for everything he did for the city. Um, he was a good guy, and, uh, long after he, uh, was off council, he, he still became a part of, uh, of being involved in Summers Point. Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. Let me have a roll call, please. Councilmember Bruno?
Here.
Councilmember Owen?
Here.
Councilmember DePantholius?
Here.
Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember McWiggin?
Here.
Councilmember Dill?
Here.
Council President Johnston?
Here. Also present is Mayor Glasser, Administrator Frost, City Clerk Samuelson, City Solicitor Smith, and City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org. Uh, I would ask for a motion to, for the consideration of the $48 waiver to approve an additional bill list, uh, requests for Dobbs, for vacation of Dobbs Avenue, next to 1716 Lot 1, a paper street, and proposed fireworks display. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, communications. Um, I have a few things that I would like to read, um, that I received this week. Uh, first one is, uh, from our Chief of Police, Chief Summers. I hope this memo finds you well. I am writing to express my concerns regarding the potential implementation of retail cannabis sales within the city of Summers Point. I would like to bring the following reasons to your attention, which I believe warrant careful consideration. The legalization of retail cannabis sales may lead to increased instances of impaired driving and public intoxication. Studies have shown that the consumption of cannabis can impair cognitive, cognitive functions and motor skills, making it a potential risk on our roadways and public spaces. This will place an additional burden on law enforcement to enforce impaired driving laws and maintain public order. Additionally, the New Jersey Attorney General has yet to finalize and release law enforcement guidance on the exact quantitative levels to prove impairment in the court of law. Retail cannabis establishments may become potential targets for criminal activity, including theft, burglaries, and armed robberies. The large quantities of cannabis and cash on the premises can attract criminal elements to our city, opposing significant challenges to the law enforcement in ensuring the safety of both businesses and residents. The establishment of the right, of a regulatory frame, framework for cannabis sales will require additional resources and specialized training for law enforcement personnel to effectively monitor and force compliance of the new laws. This could strain our department's already limited resources and create challenges in identifying and responding to potential violations. Keep in mind cannabis is still an illegal substance to possess and use federally. The presence of retail cannabis stores may inadvertently expose young people to cannabis and normalize its use. This may lead to increase in cannabis use among minors, potentially affecting their health, academic performance, and future opportunities. We must consider the potential impact on our youth and take measures to protect them from exposures to substances that can harm their development. Um, the decision to allow cannabis sales can be polarizing, leading to divisions within the community, including among our business members. It is essential to carefully consider the desires and concerns of all community members before proceeding with any decision that may be far-reaching, may have far-reaching social consequences. Generally speaking, placing a cannabis facility in the center of Route 9 Business District, which backs up to residential neighborhoods, should be reconsidered. Given these considerations, I recommend conducting thorough public forums and consultations with community stakeholders to gather their feedback on the matter. Additionally, if the council were to decide to move forward with this concept, I suggest developing comprehensive regulations that address these concerns and prioritize public safety while adhering to state laws. I say this, with all due respect, this cannabis law in New Jersey is new. The potential negative outcomes are not able to be weighed at this time with scientific data. Waiting to see how other, our, other neighborhood, neighboring communities fare in time with their facilities is probably a wise decision. Please be assured that I remain committed to supporting the safety and security of our community. Should you require any further information or assistance, please do not hesitate to reach out. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Uh, it's from Chief Robert Summers. I have another letter here that, uh, is addressed to me. Just wanted to send this letter to comment on the issue dispensary in Summers Point. Cannabis is becoming legal across the country, whether we like it or not. There is plenty of revenue to be made through this type of venture, allowing it to come into our town. It seems as if we're not going to stop, we're not going to stop it, we're not going to stop the change in the growth of this industry. I would like to ask that we would consider one in, for Summers Point. As we, the people of Summers Point, can use the revenue, that is quite a bit of money, and the hundreds of thousands could offset playgrounds, school systems, taxes, lunch programs for children who are less fortunate, et cetera, after-school programs, and so on and so on. I vote to have cannabis, have a cannabis store in Summers Point, New Jersey. We can't stop it, so let's do it for the betterment of our town. Greatfully, Jacqueline Kuhn, 32 Bayside Drive in Summers Point. And the last one I have, uh, this is a good one. This was sent to our city clerk, uh, but I, I really do want everyone to hear this one. I am writing to you in order to comment on the recent interaction with your office and staff. Recently, I was attempting to get my father's birth certificate from the city of Summers Point, as I wasn't sure where he was born. Due to an unfortunate interaction with their clerk's office, I was ready to give up. I gave it one more try and called the city of Summers Point. I was greeted on the phone by Allison. Not only did she patiently consider, patiently listen to my unique situation, but she also gave me further instructions on how to move forward. I came into the office during the vital records hours and met her. She clarified the information we had discussed on the phone and was able to verify that my father was born in Summers Point. She also verified the last name of my father's birth father was correct. Although we could not release the certificate to me due to missing first and middle names, a validation of my grandfather's surname is substantial. I would like to commend Allison on her demeanor and disposition, in addition to her professionalism and knowledge. When I was frustrated and defeated, she gave me hope, and now I have a plan of action. As a fellow public servant, I know that it can be challenging dealing with the public, and she deserves to be recognized for her excellence. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I hope that you will relay this message to your employee. And that's from Briante, Briani Mazzoun. So it's always good to hear compliments about our, um, city employees, because they do work very hard, so. Does anyone else have any communications to offer? Okay, um, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, well. Heck with that thing. Um, yes, I do. So I just want to remind everyone that the, our American veterans have their building down at 415 Shore Road, and on Monday, August 7th, at 10 o'clock, they am, and they will be having, uh, coffee with vets. So if you want to hang out with the vets, Freddie Vineyard, Tommy and Asente, and many other vets will be down there, so stop in. Poetry in a Park will be on Sunday, August 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at JFK Park. Such a great event, and if you can get out to that, stop in there. Um, yesterday, July 26th, was the 33rd anniversary of the American Disabilities Act, and what an act that has been over those 33 years, where it's allowed for equal opportunity and full participation and independent living and economic self-sufficiency for 51 million Americans with disabilities in these United States. So we can never forget that, uh, what this act has done and what it's done to help those folks. So with that, that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Frost.
Good evening. Nothing to report this evening.
Mr. Smith?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
I have two items. The flashing pedestrian beacons at Ocean Heights and the bike path were installed this week, so they're now working. So, um, that helps with the people crossing Ocean Heights. Administrator Frost and City Council President Johnston and I met with the county engineer regarding the grant for Shore Road for pedestrian improvements, um, to go over our recommendations and go over their report that they had done about, um, recommendations that the county is proposing. Um, that project should move forward in the fall, and we plan to have a public meeting, uh, probably a meeting an hour before the city council meeting in September, for the public to come out and give suggestions.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll get that date out as soon as it's confirmed. We're just waiting for the county to confirm that, so, thank you. Move on to, uh, committee reports. Um, we have, um, Representative from EDAC to give us an update on what EDAC is doing. Uh, I know it says Mr. Westcott on the agenda, but, um, Mr. Habercorn is going to be giving the report today.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Chuck's, uh, family, they had a death in the family, so I'm filling in for him. Jason, do you mind? I have a handout for everybody that's up there. I'm going to take a little bit of time to go through, um, a little bit of a presentation here, since we have signed on with the, uh, the new, um, marketing firm. Just to start off, Economic Development Advisor Commission is to advise, to advise city council of future and can, and current conditions of economic development in Summers Point. The agreement, as I mentioned, was signed with Performance Marketing in June. Press releases and Facebook posts have largely been centered around the beach concerts, since the beach concerts presently represent the highest-profile events. It appears by attending the, uh, beach concerts this year, it seems to be that attendance is up, but hopefully at the end of the season, we'll get some empirical data that supports that. On July 19th, a press release was dropped introducing events in the city for all the way out through September. This will be the practice, uh, going forward. The week before the next month, a PR release will go out highlighting the next month's events. A copy of the marketing schedule is attached. Uh, by getting the events out early, media outlets become familiar, and the events, um, will then be published in those media outlets, and if the outlets have questions, they can then go to Performance Marketing to help. Marketing the city events brings people to the town, informs residents of what's going on, and one would conclude, more folks, more spend, more positive press will attract businesses to the city. Hallmark is an example. When they moved into the, uh, old Pier 1 building, uh, Performance Marketing did a Facebook drop for us. The management of Normans, which owns the Hallmark here in town, both their local and their corporate people, were really impressed by the attendance that they got. There was 25 people in line before they even opened up, and they told us, they were very complimentary of how Summers Point had welcomed them. Another example is Dobbs Avenue, the Green Team Project. Performance also promoted this on Facebook, and we did get some positive feedback there. We're working with Performance Marketing to come up with a QR code. The concept is strategically to place these in businesses around town. Scanning will take you to the calendar of the city website, which is actively being kept up to date. The login method attracts and collects email addresses for future access to, um, other people that are either visiting or residents, to see, you know, who's, who's actually logging in. And there is a copy of it in the, in here. Our commission members have been going out to welcome businesses. In the next two weeks, we will be welcoming Dennisville Fence, The Kitchen Shop, The Bike Shop, and Queen James. There may be others, we're trying to get the full list, but we want to actively get out and recognize these people, because it is good promotion for the city. Part of the marketing plan is for four public relation releases, starting in August. Each one will reach up to 50,000 people, and there'll be two Facebook posts a week. We've already started that. Keeping the momentum going into the end of the season and the upcoming, so, the season is important to keep the business environment going here in town. A subcommittee of EDAC members has met with the Atlantic County Economic Alliance. This meeting was a fact-finding, and the group will come back to, um, our committee at large over the next two weeks, or two months, I should say. We're going to be trying to figure if there are benefit to, um, joining that alliance. We would bring that to, obviously, city council with a recommendation either way. Uh, while the farmer's market is not part of EDAC umbrella, Rob Hopkins is a member of our commission, and each Saturday, several of our commission members attend the farmer's market and place updates on Facebook in support of the excellent work that Rob is doing. Many, many, Summers Point, uh, in the area of Shore Local, Mainland Living, Tony Martz Presents, they've been all giving us a lot of press this summer, uh, which is a good thing. Reaching our residents, reaching out to the surrounding towns to spend time and money in our town goes a long way to supporting and stabilizing our business community. Positive press, positive experiences, brand-new business. We also have come up with a Business of the Month certificate. John Hilberg, who's a member of our group, came up with the idea, and we have a copy of what that would look like attached to this, um, this presentation I gave you. Improvements to the access onto the beach, riding on Bay Avenue, the bike path improvements, and the crosswalk improvements on Shore Road will be included in upcoming press releases. Uh, so I ask, if you have any questions, please reach out to either myself or the commission, and we can answer those, um, those questions. If you turn further after the narrative, there is an, um, an exhibit of what the certificate of the, the month would look like for the Business of the Month, so I've included that. There's also the, uh, QR scan, what it would look like. It's active right now, so if you go ahead and click on it, you could log in, too, right to the site. Um, the next is on June 24th, there was a, we started to build the, uh, press releases for the August, the month of August. You'll see there's four pages there indicating the dates, what it's about, little image on what's going to be going out, and then the F is for Facebook, the I is for Instagram, and where there's a boost, there's $75 for that charge. These are all the things that you'll be seeing going out, uh, through Performance Marketing over the next month. Um, then there's another one in here, a media report, showing where we have been in the media over the last, uh, month. But I wanted to share the last part of this. It says metrics for July 2023. This came from Performance Marketing to me this morning. Here's a Facebook report for the last 28 days versus the previous 28 days. I'm pleased to report that we are moving in the right direction. In the last 28 days, June 27th to July 24th, we reached 32,248 people, which is 163 percent increase over the prior 28 days. We have 75 new Facebook pages, likes, which is 102 percent increase. Facebook visits are up 39 percent, and our largest reach was the Hallmark. Um, when we dropped that, it reached 13,000 people and had over 500 post reactions. So when we got the agreement approved by council, one of the things that we wanted to do is measure success, and I believe this is a good way of seeing that we are actually reaching more people. How that's going to translate into dollars in town is a tough thing to do, but we are reaching, we are getting positive press. Just before I got here, I got another thing from Performance Marketing. It says, attached is a clip from last week's press release from the Hammington Gazette. Well, Hammington is in Atlantic County, they rarely cover the events of the shore, so we considered this a win. And I'm going to ask Jason if you could just pass it around. It's just what was in the Hammington Gazette, and it was very positive press for Summers Point. So I do believe the contract that we have in place, we are seeing results, there are positive results. It's just the beginning, you need to keep the momentum going, and so I just wanted to give you guys an update, because we promised we would. of what that would look like attached to this presentation I gave you. Improvements to the access onto the beach, riding on Bay Avenue, the bike path improvements, and the crosswalk improvements on Shore Road will be included in upcoming press releases. So I ask, if you have any questions, please reach out to either myself or the commission, and we can answer those questions. If you turn further after the narrative, there is an exhibit of what the certificate of the month would look like for the Business of the Month, so I've included that. There's also the QR scan, what it would look like. It's active right now, so if you go ahead and click on it, you could log in too, right to the site. The next is on June 24th. There was a, we started to build the press releases for the August, the month of August. You'll see there's four pages there indicating the dates, what it's about, little image on what's going to be going out, and then the F is for Facebook, the I is for Instagram, and where there's a boost, there's $75 for that charge. These are all the things that you'll be seeing going out through Performance Marketing over the next month. Then there's another one in here, a media report showing where we have been in the media over the last month. But I wanted to share the last part of this. It says metrics for July 2023. This came from Performance Marketing to me this morning. Here's a Facebook report for the last 28 days versus the previous 28 days. I'm pleased to report that we are moving in the right direction. In the last 28 days, June 27th to July 24th, we reached 32,248 people, which is 163% increase over the prior 28 days. We have 75 new Facebook page likes, which is 102% increase. Facebook visits are up 39%, and our largest reach was the Hallmark. When we dropped that, it reached 13,000 people and had over 500 post reactions. So when we got the agreement approved by council, one of the things that we wanted to do is measure success, and I believe this is a good way of seeing that we are actually reaching more people. How that's going to translate into dollars in town is a tough thing to do, but we are reaching, we are getting positive press. Just before I got here, I got another thing from Performance Marketing. It says, "Attached is a clip from last week's press release from the Hammington Gazette." Well, Hammington is in Atlantic County. They rarely cover the events of the shore, so we considered this a win. And I'm going to ask Jason if you could just pass it around. It's just what was in the Hammington Gazette, and it was very positive press for Summers Point. So I do believe the contract that we have in place, we are seeing results. There are positive results. It's just the beginning. You need to keep the momentum going, and so I just wanted to give you guys an update because we promised we would once the agreement was up and going. Well, thank you. If you have any questions, either reach out or you can ask them now.
I just wanted to add one thing as far as Performance Marketing has been trying to get this side of the, visit Summers Point side of the website updated, and I know a lot of improvements have already been made. If anybody sees anything else that needs to be changed, please let them know. And now, when you do sign onto that side of the page, it does ask you for your email address, so we can start collecting email addresses and start communicating better.
And it lands you right on the calendar, so you don't have to navigate to going through and seeing what's going on. Would be nice down the road if there was some way of getting that QR scan into a mail out that goes from the city where people in town, when they got the mail out, could just click on it too and log in. So we have some things we want to look at there. And that.
Any other questions?
If there's not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Any other committee reports?
Madam President, I attended the Summers Point Art Commission, and as the mayor mentioned, there's poetry in the park August 6th, and there will also be music at that time, and they're planning a talent show for October 15th at the Gateway Playhouse, and the flyers are going out now for, you know, people who are interested in being a part of that. They have the ongoing Poetry Society going on at the Senior Center, and they should be having photography reception at Shore Medical Center that was postponed during COVID.
Thank you. Any other committees?
Recreation?
Yes.
This coming weekend, the Garvey Boat Races will be back. Practice on Saturday. Actual race will be on Sunday, August 6th, from 10 to 4:00.
Thank you. Okay. I wanted to, well, let's get, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 22nd, 2023 meeting, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Before we go forward, I just want to pull out two resolutions here, just in the interest of everyone's time. We'll pull these out and do these first, and then we'll move back on to the agenda. Resolution number 178. Oh, okay. Could I have a motion to open to the public for comments on resolution number 178 and 180?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for comment on resolutions number 178 and 180 only.
Yes, good evening, council members. John Helbig, 106 East Stars Avenue, chairman of our city environmental commission. That's a role I really enjoy, and part of that this year has been us, with Greg Gregory's help, taking over a natural area at 10th and Dobbs Avenue in the city. And we still have a long way to go, but one of the primary things we wanted to do there was get a nice identification sign that identifies it as a natural area. And Mike Franklin at Eastern Signs and his staff were great in terms of putting it together, designing it, spending time, and Mike, in fact, installed the sign himself. So I just want to say thank you to Mike personally and his crew, and if you stop by there, you'll see it. It's, I think it's just a great sign, really fits the site well, so.
Can he donate it?
Yeah. Exactly.
A motion to close?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Resolution number 178.
Resolution number 178 of 2023, saluting and thanking Eastern Sign Company. Whereas the Summers Point Green Team has partnered with the Great Egg Harbor River Council to restore a city-owned parcel located at the intersection of 10th Street and Dobbs Avenue designated as Block 1425 Lot 1 as a natural area and habitat for native plants. And whereas it is important to identify this parcel as a natural area suitable for the propagation of native plants, and whereas longtime Summers Point citizens Wendy and Mike Franklin, proprietors of Eastern Sign Company of Egg Harbor Township, kindly consented to donate the design, fabrication, and installation of an aesthetically pleasing site identification sign for the parcel. And now therefore, it is hereby resolved that mayor and city council recognize and thank Wendy and Mike Franklin of the Eastern Sign Company for their generosity and support of the project.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments?
It's always a great, when a business steps forward for a community, and Mike, we've known you a long time, thank you for that.
Glad my two cents in, of course. I've known Mike for many, many years. This isn't the first time he's gotten involved in Summers Point. Mike was a longtime member of Bay Fest Committee. Where I first met him, he was making signs back then for the city and putting them up for Bay Fest. I remember early in the morning, every Bay Fest, Mike would be out stringing signs across Shore Road and putting them out. Again, this is a person of family and company who has dedicated themselves to this town. I just want to thank you, Mike. You know, thank you for your friendship, I thank you for what you've done for Summers Point.
Oh, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to do the honors?
Yeah, I'll do the honors. Michael, come on down here.
Really, I'm happy for a grateful city. Thank you for everything you've done for us, for a lot of time in the summer of the time, and it was this one governing body that recognized that, and I just want to thank you. I appreciate it. Glad you took your time.
You're right.
Thank you. Resolution number 180.
Resolution number 180 of 2023, supporting Gregory's Restaurant and Bars New Jersey Trademark of Taco Tuesday. Whereas Gregory's Restaurant and Bar is a family-owned restaurant and bar proudly serving delicious food and great drinks in Summers Point since 1946. And whereas the iconic establishment has been operated by the Gregory family for over half a century and five generations, providing a friendly, familiar place for good food, inexpensive drinks, and great times for their Summers Point patrons. And whereas Gregory's is a prime example of the wonderful family-owned small businesses that Summers Point is known for, where locals and visitors alike are warmly welcomed. And whereas in 1979, third-generation proprietors and cousins Gregory and Walt Gregory initiated Taco Tuesday as a fun weekly event to promote fellowship among their patrons while enjoying the inexpensive delicacy. And whereas on occasion, the Taco Tuesday events at Gregory's have been used to raise money for local charities such as the Bud Kern Scholarship Fund, Little League Baseball, and Summers Point Police Athletic League. And whereas a conservative estimate puts the number of tacos served by Gregory's over the years at more than 2 million, making this tradition worthy and strong support to preserve it for future generations of Summers Pointers. And whereas after hosting its first Taco Tuesday in 1979, Gregory's received the first and original service trademark for the phrase three years later from the United States Patent Office. And whereas after protracted litigation in the early 1990s, Gregory's won the rights for Taco Tuesday in New Jersey, while Taco John's, a Wyoming-based chain whose 370 locations were mainly in the West and Midwest, was granted the rights for the rest of the United States. And whereas a global corporate giant fast-food entity is trying to break the patent of Taco Tuesday across the nation, including New Jersey, filing with United States Trademark regulators this May to get Taco John's and Gregory's to abandon their trademarks, even eliciting the help of a well-known basketball player. And whereas Taco John's has recently given up the fight, vowing to the overwhelming corporate resources, while Gregory's is committed to soldiering on in this David versus Goliath battle. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that mayor and city council, the city of Summers Point, recognize Gregory's Restaurant and Bar as part of the fabric of the community and its contributions to the city, and it further resolve that the mayor and city council support Gregory's in their battle to preserve this local tradition.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm glad we make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr.?
I'm sure I speak for many of us that we have many, many fond memories in that establishment over there, and many of them circled around or convened around tacos. And, you know, regardless of what happens in this battle of, with that behemoth corporation, I will continue to enjoy tacos on Tuesdays at one of my favorite establishments. And I had a chance to say something about other establishments earlier this week, and this establishment is just like many, you know, you go in there and you're going to talk and see and honor, and you're going to be warmly welcomed in there, and it's an iconic place and it's going to last forever. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I'll throw in a couple sentences. Greg's going to say something, but the bottom line is Summers Point is known for so many things, but one of the things we all mention are really known for is Taco Tuesdays at Gregory's. I mean, it's, people, you know, people come, they say, yeah, you got Tony Martz, you got Bay George, you had this and that, right? But you have Gregory's, you have Taco Tuesdays, and who is this large corporation coming in and telling us, and telling Summers Point, in one of our great establishments, by a great family, like telling us they can't have that? That's not right. It's not the American way. So, of course, we all support you. We always will support the Gregory family because you have supported us, and you have supported this entire town, no matter what, and you'll continue to do that. More than that is right. So with that, my very best to the Gregory's, and keeping the name up for Taco Tuesday.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm glad that you're continuing the fight because it's just not right. So I'm glad that you're, that you're going to continue this and not give in. I was there for the first Taco Tuesday, I can say that, so. And Gregory's was actually my first real job before that, so. Anyway, so I'm very happy to support you on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 180 is adopted. Would you like to do the honors?
I have another frame here, so. Come on down.
Send it to Malpey, Stan.
Fifth generation, plus four.
There you go.
You know what he said to me? I said, "What's your favorite part?" He said, "Talking to the customers."
That's one shot. So. Get in together, guys, you know, it was great. Good luck on behalf of a grateful city. Thanks, Mayor, I appreciate it really good.
I want to take a minute here. You guys lassoed me up to do Bay Fest this year. I never got a chance to thank the people that made this great, and Jason can tell you, I might have been hard to work with with these people, but they know how to run Bay Fest now, do they not? I won't have to do it next year because they've turned out great. It was.
No problem.
Rihanna McNair and Ashley Madison.
Yeah.
And I thought it was Ashley Madison, but that's an old website. But they were so terrific. They listened in the very beginning, and then all of a sudden, it's like you feel it being pulled away from me, and by the end, they were done. They had it, they had it all figured out. So make sure that EDAC has the good old days on their calendar, too.
We appreciate you too, Greg.
Yeah, we appreciate you stepping up.
Absolutely. You helped save.
You saved it.
Bay Fest. You made your cog in the wheel.
Just like every other event I run, I get people.
Thank you.
Surround them, surround them.
Right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to our agenda here.
Excuse us, we're going to leave. Some of us have to go back to work now.
Ordinance number 17.
Ordinance number 17 of 2023, an ordinance amending the Summers Point Municipal Code, Chapter 174, Mercantile Licenses, Section 174-5, Conditions for Issuance.
Which one is, which one is it?
Second reading.
Okay.
I only give you the ones that are public.
Yeah, but it says second, second reading.
Mm-hmm.
Is this the kind of?
No, no, this one. I didn't give it.
Oh, I'm sorry, this 17.
On the last time.
Yeah, I forgot. Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay. This is the second reading for this ordinance, so could I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So I don't have a copy of that here. Right.
Okay. May I? We are now open for public comment on ordinance number 17. Hearing none, could I have a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 17, please?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 17 is adopted. Ordinance number 18.
Ordinance number 18 of 2023, an ordinance enacted under the authority of NJSA 39:4-197.6 and NJSA 39:4-97.7, repealing ordinance number 17 of 2021, which authorized the establishment of a restricted parking zone in front of the residence at 200 Pennsylvania Avenue.
This is also a second reading. May I have a motion to open for public comment?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 18. Hearing none, could I have a motion to close, please?
So moved. Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion for ordinance number 18, please?
I'll make that motion.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 18 is adopted. Ordinance number 19.
Ordinance number 19 of 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 114 Development Regulations of the City Code, allowing the operation of certain classes of cannabis businesses within municipal boundaries of Summers Point by one, repealing 114-119A16 of Chapter 114, Article 20, two creating Article IB of Chapter 114 Cannabis Licensing and Regulations, and three amending Article 7 GB, General Business District, Article 17IPID, Planned Industrial District.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
May I start with, I had submitted a revised ordinance earlier this week, and then I made some further modifications today, which are very minor in nature, that I would ask the council to consider modifying that which was going to be introduced, if we get that far on this. And if you would like, I would just tell you where they're at and explain the rationale.
Okay.
First is, each ray of the ordinance, Section 114-4.17, purpose, says the purpose of this chapter, that's incorrect, it's the purpose of the article, chapters 114, and we're really in an article section that I created inside our land development ordinances. So it has to be amended if the council is willing to introduce this. The second one is on page 11, excuse me, page 10, I'm sorry. Talks about local cannabis licensing authority, that's Section 114-4.22. Down at the bottom of the page, I had added some additional language from the Down at the bottom of the page, I had added some additional language from the one that I had previously handed out to council on Monday, and after taking a look at it and reading it in conjunction with the other aspects, I think that it would be best to remove it. It's a sentence that says, initial approval shall occur in the manner set forth in Section I don't know what I was thinking, but I believe that does not need to be included there.
Just that sentence, please, Mr. Smith?
Just that part of it.
Just that sentence.
Thank you.
It's all approval. I don't believe that needs to be included there. I sat up one night doing this, and who knows what thought went through my mind then, I guess. But after going through that again today, I would suggest the council delete that. And the next is on page 11. Rationale for this, I have some concerns as to where the ordinance is going to take us ultimately, and it's based upon conversations I've had with other individuals who are solicitors in municipalities that have licensed cannabis businesses. Conditional approval, number letter C in Section 114-4.24, Procedures and Requirements for Approval, Conditional Approval, reads as follows, currently after review and consideration by the governing body, it may, and I include it may in there for a specific reason, which we all get to, grant a conditional approval, including that the applicant has met the requirements set forth in this chapter. I would suggest the following sentence be added, the governing body may decline to grant more conditional approvals than the number of licenses issued. And the rationale for that is, is I'm aware that there have been some problems because the state, the state is not limiting the amount of licenses it may issue for a municipality, even though we may issue five conditional approvals for one license, the state could grant the five licenses that have to come back and ultimately be approved here. And the question then would be, why is the state doing that? Why are they granting more licenses than that which we are actually seeking to allow? And it has been recommended to me that we do not issue a conditional approval for more than the license, amount of licenses we are having. So right now, in this ordinance, we have one retail, one distribution license, and that we only give a conditional approval for those, that number.
Could you just repeat that again, so I know I have it right, the sentence that you want to add?
Yes. The governing body may decline to grant more conditional approvals than the number of local licenses issued.
Okay.
In other words, if we're going to do one license, we're only going to give one conditional approval. And how we get there is a whole notion, which I can address in a minute. But see, if you go down from C to D, the limitation on number of licenses does address the fact that a local cannabis license will not be issued from application, an applicant that has obtained a conditional approval of the maximum number of local cannabis licenses for the same class have been issued by the city. And I had added some additional language, which will be discussed here at open council, the local governing body may set forth by way of resolution, the requirements criteria and/or manner of selection of the applicant, which will determine the local governing body's decision to convert any conditional license to an annual license. And I included that same type of language on the conditional approval, because I don't know where we're going with how we're going to select an applicant ultimately. Recall, I had handed out a, or emailed to everybody, some information I had received, and I attended a symposium on this. One of the issues is, how do you get a license? And the issue is the fact that we're going to have applicants. It's been suggested to me, we don't need to engage in any type of advertisement. None of us are blind. We've sat here and seen people sit here who appear to be only interested in the cannabis discussion we're having. We know that there's business opportunities await these people, and they're very interested in it. It's been advised that, don't worry about it, the minute you pass the ordinance, you will be getting applications, and that is an application process, which I had previously discussed with the business department and the committee, and it was suggested we follow something similar of nature to what we do on a liquor license in town, with a background check, that information. But the application process actually, an individual or an entity can obtain a license. And this is the part that's a little unclear to me, and I, there doesn't really seem to be a lot of experts on this, because obviously, this is new law. But this would come to council on a regular license. It's then going to have to go to the planning board, because we have a whole area of zoning, which I'll get to in a minute. And then it would come back from the planning board to this, and then we would pass a resolution if we were going to convert a conditional approval license that's been issued by the state down to an annual license. Apparently, people can, and this is part of the whole, I might send out their flowchart, if you can get a conditional application to the state immediately, and you can open up, as I understand it, without our approval, but you need our approval within 120 days, or else you shut down. That is my understanding of this. I welcome any discussion, or if anyone wants further research on this, which ultimately I think we have to do before the next reading if we get that far. But the problem is, is that, once we start issuing these conditional approvals, I think we are going to be required to approve whoever comes in with a license once we go through this. And the question is, how do we subjectively or objectively approve an applicant that's going to be here on an annual basis? And that I still need to work out a little bit. It has been suggested to me that the first applicant in gets it, and you don't go anywhere because then you avoid litigation. I'm going to suggest to this council that the concept that we have bantered about and discussed, that we would have control over who's going to be here, is going to be a lot, lot less attainable, I guess is maybe a word I should throw out there, that we're not going to be able to do that. That's my legal opinion, based upon discussions with some other attorneys on this who are representing the municipalities. I've discussed this with certain members of council already independently, so I just want you to be aware of that. If council believes it is going to just be able to handpick someone, that may not be what is going to happen here, and you should be aware of that. They are the only changes I had. I can go through this. If you have not had a chance to read it, I suggest that you ought to. We're doing the one distributor license, one retail license. The areas which we are going to propose, we had, again, keep referring to Mr. Helbig, who's helped out so graciously on this, and I don't think we would have gotten this far without Mr. Helbig's help. But essentially, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, and as can our engineer, but the general area is going to be the Starnes, the Starnes, I have to do a while. Shopright Plaza. Even though it's understood that nothing is going to happen there with federal loans until there's a federal change in law, if that happens next year, and we decide to add another retail store, we don't have to come back and visit the area. And the same is for the next area, which would be the Acme Shopping Plaza. And then it would be from Shopright Plaza, southbound on Route 9 to Chapman Boulevard. And because we put a 200-foot limit on the location to a school, you would have a skip, so to speak, on Route 9 until you hit Groveland Avenue. Then it would proceed on Groveland Avenue down to Pennsylvania on Route 9. You would then pick up, south of Maze Landing Road, on the west side. On MacArthur Boulevard, it would be the area from, essentially Platts, and there's Brad out there, east to, located on the Old Circle. And on Maze Landing Road, it would be on the northbound side from Route 9 to the Parkway. So that's the general location, but anyone has any specific questions about that, Mr. Helbig is here, and I'll put him on the spot if I need to. But that's where we're at on that. Essentially prepared to go through it, if anyone wants to, I'm prepared to answer any questions that anyone has. But again, this initially just started off with me telling the council that I had proposed some additional changes. When I sent the email out, I told the council I was tweaking this bill, and I sat there today, going back over, and realized that these were some things I thought would benefit, tighten it up. New law, maybe some towns have had it, but I do know that other towns where they haven't have had some issues, and my job as council is to avoid problems if we possibly can. I'm not guaranteeing anything, so, there we go. No guarantees come with this.
Do I need a motion to amend this ordinance with those changes?
That's what I asked this council, to amend it. Yes.
So, just make sure I'm saying, a motion for it--
As I had requested.
To amend it, as Mr. Smith has requested.
But I think that that tightens it up a little bit. I'm trying to avoid, trying to avoid the problems where we had 10 conditional approvals out there, 10 business entities obtained licenses, 10 business entities come back here and look at us saying, why are you conditionally approving 10 of us if you're only going to give one license?
Okay.
Everyone deserves to be treated fairly in this, and that includes the city, and includes anyone interested in operating businesses in the city.
Okay. Could I have a motion to amend the ordinance with Mr. Smith's recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now I need, I already have the motion for the ordinance. Any comments?
Madam President, may--
Yes, Mr. McGee.
Just to clarify, Mr. Smith, relative to what you described there, if we were to get all through this, and this ordinance became law, the awarding of the-- single license, it is going to be done, paraphrasing here, first come, first served. And that we really have no criteria or no stance to--
Filter.
Filter, or, like in your words, select somebody, or disqualify somebody.
You notice I had put in what you were sent on Monday--
Yeah.
--talked about resolutions setting forth, criteria and requirement.
Yeah.
And the reason I put that in there was because, I don't know where this council really wants to go with this. It became, it wasn't in my mind as much of an issue as it was until I started talking to some people out there in other towns. And then you realize that they are facing some problems. And as I indicated, I don't want the city to face any problems. I don't want business, I don't want business entities spending money, with money, chasing the goldmine, when there's only one goldmine, and it's not going to be available to them. I, there's certain ways we can do this. The state licensing procedure gives a, does it by way of a point system, and you may recall, I discussed before that there's a case up in the appellate division at present that is attacking, so to speak, the way the state issued a license in a municipality up in New Jersey. And as I indicated to you, there's certain items, veterans, minorities, individuals with convictions for marijuana. They, if you go through that, they get a little checkbox, and how you then grade them on that is something that is more objective than us sitting here and interviewing someone for a job, and you say, tell me about yourself, and that's very subjective. And I'm not sure what anyone anticipated. I've talked to certain council people here, and this may sound like a glimmer of thought process, but, you know, I know in other states, you want, you want a license, you know, to hunt bears, say, and there's a raffle for it, and everyone goes into the slot, and they pull a number out. And it may seem like, you know, who in their right mind would do that for this type of license? But maybe that's the most, most objective way to do it, purely by chance. The problem is, and this is the analogy that I discussed with someone, if, if we were just talking about jewelry stores, we wouldn't be sitting here. Because if five jewelry stores want to open up in the Acme Plaza, wouldn't we care? God bless them, and you look at how many pizza places we have in town. God bless them, it meets the zoning requirement. But when the state allows you to issue another liquor license, that goes out in bid. And so that's a whole different process, and the bidding is probably the best criteria because the whole concept behind this, the way the state's doing this, is to raise money. While the state allows businesses to apply for a license, knowing full well that there's only going to be one license in a municipality, they're raising money. The state's doing so. But if you have a liquor license, you can bid it out, and even if the state had then said, we want 50% of whatever you've got on a cannabis license, we'd say, there's an easy way of doing it, highest bidder wins. But it's not that. It's, we're supposed to make that decision, and I think we'll have to refine this. I mean, assuming that this passes on first meeting, this will go to the planning board. Their next meeting is not till the end of August, and they are required by statute to report back to us within 35 days. I do believe they can ask for additional time, should they need it. I don't know if they do. I don't, I'm not just giving you the procedural aspect of this. So it'll come back to you, and then we'd have to have at that point, how are we going to select this?
But we can set criteria.
I'm sorry, what?
We can set a criteria.
You can insert things. You yourself, Madam President, as, blame you or pin anything on you, has suggested that an applicant should have a vested interest in this community by owning property. If you have a business, now, I don't know, hey, I don't know the legality of that, we could go back and look at that. But another type of criteria, perhaps we would come out with a whole list of other things by resolution, so that anyone who's going to be applying for a license would already know in advance what the criteria we would be looking for.
But that criteria there, mention it, and I think that's-- But that criteria there mentioned, and I think that's an excellent idea, that somebody would have property or have some interest or investment within the community. I had the opportunity to sit in on a webinar held by the CRC, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And from my readings previous to even this reaching here, is that the overall approach by the state and motivations by the state is, they are looking for, not disadvantaged, but the smaller entities that, entrepreneurs that have not had an opportunity, and they want to make it low-cost entrance into this industry. And, you know, that, and you mentioned there's criteria in even the, you're checking the box of a previous drug conviction or a previous marijuana conviction. That helps your score. It was discussed during this webinar, that this is an opportunity to make up for the war on drugs. Now, we don't want to go down that discussion, but that was the motivation, and it seems to be the motivation. So, I just wonder, if we make a criteria that you have to, you have to be sort of well-heeled and have some sort of investment, that's going to start excluding what perhaps their target entrepreneur is. I'm just concerned about that if we go through all this, and we go to, we're not going to have any control. Now, myself personally, it's my opinion that, and I don't want it, but we'll get to that. If we're going to get one of these businesses, and it's going to be, whatever you think about, whether it's a problem or not, we want somebody that's going to be there for a while and be able to continue to enhance the business or continue to put money in the business. This isn't on a shoestring, for lack of a better term. And I am very concerned that what you just said there, whether it's through a lottery or the first person that shows up at the door, we have no control.
I don't believe that what the state is telling us as the motivating factor.
Well, I mean--
I personally don't believe that.
You don't believe the state?
Yeah, that's well-written, that's well-doed.
Well, you have a guy that sat up here, and they'll always say that, that he didn't trust the state on a lot of things. So, I'll just go, I'll be on that too. But I'm just, not to make a joke out of this, but, but what they did was they set aside a retail store that would be 2,500 square feet or less, and I think it was, and I went for, and I have it all here if you need it, but you have a limited amount of employees. Was it 10, was it 20? And it was supposed to be more geared to the people who don't have the money to break in and establish a 20,000-square--
Right.
--department store. And so, that's their little giveaway on this. The reality of it is, and anyone who's ever done any business in the state knows, that you end up with minority businesses all the time, that are not minority-owned businesses. The funding is coming elsewhere. So, that's my sarcastic--
Okay, so--
--viewpoint on this. So, you know, I think that at this point, I mean, this is, if you say it's the first application in, there are individuals sitting out there who already have a license. So, those individuals who have a license, when they're lined up out on our ramp up here to come into Lucy's office, are pushing their way up front. I've already got the license. This application--
But that license was issued by the state, who we all have suddenly agreed that we don't trust. So, the state's going to select who's going to operate our cannabis--
Well, essentially, they're going to go through the whole licensing process of other entities that do not have a license, and they're going to tell them that they are okay to have a license. I mean, what I was told point-blank is, we can, we can decide where they're going to be. And that's pretty much what you get in life. And I was recommended to me, we don't issue more than one conditional license, conditional approval for a license. I mean, here we have the, I don't know who put this in, this is what I had given you, but it's unnumbered. You know, what the applicants need, and the business location, municipality, applicants must have both. A letter or affidavit from zoning officials indicating the applicant's proposed location is complying with the local zoning requirements. Add a municipal resolution indicating that the intended business locations is appropriate for cannabis activities. And once we did this overlay, we just told everyone what we believe are the areas where a business location is appropriate. So, that could be what we're really limited in, limited in doing here. And, you know, I mean, I, you know, I'm just your solicitor. If I were on council, I could ask 20 questions, like, what if we like this person better? You know? Then we have to go into, you'd have to have council up here articulating rationale, and as to why we're selecting one business over the other. And that concerns me, because it's always subjective.
Well, sure, sure it is.
And, and, and look, I know, I know, and we're not fooling anyone, that people have been reaching out, the people in council. So, we do know that, that there's always a way to attack them. I'm a litigation lawyer first, you know, I've done that for 35 years now, that people, people can sue for anything, and we do have a fearless lawsuit statute, and that's meaningless. I've only had them ever granted against someone. And I don't think that you see very many of them. So, you can sue for anything. We could get sued, and I didn't mean to go into this, but--
So, this is, our task tonight is to do the first reading of the ordinance and vote on that.
Decide--
And then all of these other decisions, we have to--
Well, let me just explain to you, once you pass this, you're not going back. Pandora's boxes--
Right, right, I understand, right.
So, if you get to the second reading, and you think, I'd really think about that, and we pass it, that buyer's remorse you just got--
Is that true for all the, all the ordinance we've passed? We don't have, we don't need a second reading then?
I don't follow you, I'm sorry.
We just said the second, we couldn't go back.
Once you have a second reading, I'm saying, once you, once we do that, then the application process is--
Right.
--the application process. When are you going to change it? You're going to have someone come in with a license, and you may not want--
We have another two months after we pass this tonight, before we're going to have a second reading. And in the meantime, you could get some termination from the state, whether we have a say or not. Because if we don't have a say, that changes everything. Well, I'm not accepting the first guy that comes through the door. He's going to, I want to know where he, who he is, where he's from, and do a background check.
Well, that's what the state's going to do for us.
Good.
That's the whole, I just want to understand, that's the--
But if the state's going to decide, then this, I don't want to do it. But in the meantime, I want to pass this to get started.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so, can we move--
I'm just playing.
But that's the second part of this thing. That's the second part.
Wait for that mic.
Right.
People can't hear me.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I am--
That's the second part.
Right.
Yeah, sure. That's the second part. As Madam President has articulated, we're here to introduce this. I just want to ask a couple of questions here. I want to get away from the solicitor for a moment.
Okay.
No offense to the solicitor.
Thank you.
But I was your favorite solicitor. I just want to ask the committee, is this ordinance, with the amendments that have been made, exactly the way you want it?
I think this ordinance is very well-written. It covers just about every single thing you could imagine happening. And yes, I think it's great.
So, it's exactly the way you want it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Councilman Bruno?
Mr. Smith, I have a question for you. If we have to take the first--
Push the back off the mic. Okay, thank you.
That was yours.
First thing is, let's get some new mics.
August 10th.
August 10th, good. So, it makes sense in a business environment that we take the highest bidder, who can financially meet all of our requirements in doing this. Will we be able to pick the company if we go through this process, that gives, that's the highest bidder? And how do we participate in that as a city?
I'll answer, no.
Or not?
What do you mean by highest bidder?
Again, we're getting off, I think we're getting off topic for--
I think before we vote on this, we need to have some clarification. I'm not going to vote on something I don't have any clarification on, and that's a good question. What do you mean by highest bidder? And what's our attorney's opinion? My understanding from what you says, we can't have a highest bidder.
Right. You can't.
You can't. Listen, the choice--
Right, so why are we--
Either choose through a lottery, or the first person that shows up.
Or we could ask the same questions the state has done, as Councilman, the pamphlet is just referenced. I mean, we could, we can, we have time to discuss this, okay? I'm not, that's why I put in the aspect about the resolutions. I was just explaining the changes and why I did them. I wanted the body to know that, that once the ordinance is done and people start going and getting licenses, we're sort of stuck with where we're at. The only thing we're ultimately going to be able to change, you may be able to change some location, and then that location isn't going to change, we can't change license number one, because license number one's already set up shop, their grandfather did. And you may be able to change the issue of whether we want to put a second retail in. There are other things you can change, but, but, you know, really, your job right now is, I mean, just going to be, is this the location you want? And the criteria we set here, we can have a discussion, we will have the time to have a discussion on--
And we also have the recommendations from the planning board as well.
Yes, but they'll be talking not about, not about the licensing procedure. The planning board is just going to talk about location.
Sure.
I mean, I don't mean to make this, I don't mean to make this more difficult than it is.
Too late.
It's a difficult issue.
It's probably, it's probably one of the most important ordinances this council will ever pass. Because it dictates in the future exactly what we're going to be able to do or not do, associated with the sale of cannabis.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I look at this as, this ordinance is, I've been on council 14 years, okay? And this is probably the most important vote I'll ever make, okay? From the past and into the future for as long as the, as long as I'm on council. So, I really have to take, I want to see, I want to have a clear understanding of what I'm voting for, what my rights are, and, you know, there's some things in this ordinance that I'm not real comfortable with, and one of them is the licensing fee of being $10,000, okay? And the first year, that $10,000 is supposed to come to the city, it doesn't come to the city, the state uses it because of their investigation costs. So, what are we, what are we really gaining, other than putting a cannabis store in town and hope that we get the revenue? And I've discussed, I've beat up the revenue situation on several occasions, and I'll probably end up beating it up a little bit again tonight. All you have to do is look at the grocery receipts tax that the state was supposed to give us for years and years and years, and then all of a sudden they put a cap on it, and we haven't gotten even a quarter of what we should be getting. Is this going to happen the same way with the cannabis revenue? Or, you know, I just, I have really concerns, and of course, my ultimate concern is, does the taxpayers really want this in our town? And I don't know that that's ever been established.
Madam President, I'd like to go back to my question. Councilwoman Bruno, is this exactly the way you want this ordinance?
Initially, I was against doing this. I didn't want to do it. We went through a long process. I got to read a lot of different studies. Mr. Smith, Mr. Halbert provided us with a lot of information. I also wanted it to just be about medical marijuana, because I want choices, we're in a medical community, I want choices to be there for people. But you can't separate it in New Jersey, you know, it has to be. But, like, we ironed out a lot, and I really feel this is good, that, you know, it is what I want.
So, the ordinance is exactly what you want?
The word "exactly" is a little out there, but, yeah, I would say it is. It's within the limits of the law and what we have. Yeah, it is.
You said right there, we could open a medical-only cannabis dispensary.
No, we can't.
Right? Why not?
I thought that was, that we couldn't do that.
All right, I don't want to get off-topic here, okay?
I don't think we're getting off-topic.
No.
This is off-topic.
No, we're, you're at--
Can we have a medical cannabis store only? Or do we have to open it up to recreational?
What we're doing now can't be limited to just medical. The way we're handling this, as for us getting a license from the state to open up just medical, I couldn't tell you. I would, I would be on the phone to a local solicitor who's had a cannabis operation in their town a longer time to help me on that one.
All right, so, Mr. McCary, is this ordinance exactly the way you want it?
Let me answer you the question this way.
Sure.
All right. We've got a situation here where we've got a business decision to make, but we also have another decision to make. Do we want our kids to have a, really, a danger out there of fentanyl being sold to them, and allowing them to wet the street and buy it? Because if we don't provide them with a safe place to buy marijuana, all right, and I'm not saying just kids, I'm saying adults and whoever else wants it, we run the risk of having more deaths from fentanyl. And my concern is that fentanyl's coming across the border like crazy. The federal government's doing nothing to protect our border.
True.
This is coming through, it's going to be here, and people are going to die. So, my grandchild, if he says to me, hey, I want to buy some marijuana, do I want him to buy from some kid who may have fentanyl in that cigarette and die? There's kids that have died this past week from fentanyl, all right? So, this is a health decision as well as a business decision. We're going to get through the business decision, but I think you've got to remember the health part of this, all right? Because I've seen these kids up front. I'll share something with you that I don't normally share. I'm 20 years sober, all right? I sit in those rooms. I've seen kids come in, 16, 17, 21, 22, 35, 45-year-old people on drugs, and trying to get off of it. I understand the pain that they go through, but I also understand, from talking to them, how dangerous it is out there. It's absolutely a lot worse than it's ever been in a million years, because this stuff is coming over, and they're putting more things in it now than they ever did before. So, my vote would be to pass it, so that I have a safe place for a kid to go if he wants to smoke marijuana, or an adult. Because in this room right here, there's people that would say, oh, yeah, I did it once, or twice, or whatever. The point is that you want to do it in a safe environment. We've got to create safe environments moving forward, and this is the only way we can do it with a store. No other way. So, we do have a business decision to make here. Unless we make the business decision, we're not going to be able to make the safe decision for the kids. My answer is yes, I vote for it.
Okay, so, it's the way you want it. And I sense your passion in that, and I feel that, and I'm concerned about fentanyl and all that other stuff. But the, and no offense, the flaw in that argument is, this store is not going to wipe out the black market.
The flaw in that is that you don't sit in those rooms like I do. You don't sit in those rooms and you see kids coming in there and that have had fentanyl, and how sick they've been, all right? And right now, there's another drug that they're adding to the fentanyl that nothing can solve. They die on the spot. So, believe me--
Okay, well--
You may be, you may see a flaw, and I understand that. But maybe spend some time in those rooms and listen to those kids and find out what's going on, and you may not see that flaw that you see right now.
All right, well, you know, my, I'm not going to get into my discussions or my histories of, and, you know, my family's histories and all that stuff with substance abuse and all that. I won't put that out here. I'm just saying to you that, yes, fentanyl's a problem, but this store is not going to eliminate, take fentanyl off the--
That's your opinion. That's not a fact, that's an--
Well, of course, it's an opinion.
Right.
But it, there's, the black market is going to continue to thrive, and it continues to thrive in these communities that already have open stores. So, I mean, it's an opinion. Sure, I'm just, counterpoint to what you said there.
Understood.
All right. So, the three committee members are, think the, or, excuse me, the ordinance is what it should be, right? So, going to another point here, I asked, and it was agreed upon, that we would get advice or an opinion from economic development, as well as an opinion from-- development as well as an opinion from the business association. Do we have that?
We had a report from economic development several months ago, actually, probably a year or two ago. The business association is represented on EDAC.
Okay, well, when we had the discussion recently, that, that the report you're referring to was a survey. We got the results of the survey.
It was not a survey. It was a complete report that EDAC worked on for nine months, and they came and recommended that we move forward with, with this, that they moved forward. They did a full report. Mr. Helbig did it. He was the chair of EDAC at the time, and he stood right there and did a whole report, and they recommended that we move forward.
They recommended that we continue to study this situation. They did not recommend that we institute a retail store. When I was here at the last meeting or the meeting before that, we discussed it, and we were going to go back to economic development and get us what their opinion was. And that opinion was going to include what the, what the, what the revenue would be or a projection of the revenue, of the tax revenue, plus also any.
We also had a report.
Excuse me, I'm not finished. The opinion of what it would, how, how it would affect the rest of our business community. Do we have it?
We had.
Also during, it was, it was, it was said that we were going to get an opinion from the business association. Do we have it?
We had the, we, as far as the numbers and the tax revenue ramifications, we did have an economist come and give a whole report on his study on what those numbers would be, if you remember. Mr. Slusher came and stood there and gave us that whole, that whole report. So yes, we did have.
Okay, so if you recall that, then what is the projected revenue?
I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Well, I would think that if we're, you know, we're moving through this process here, I would think that we would want all that.
We already have it. It was, it was, it was a whole report.
Projected revenue was $400,000, and that was a low estimate, as they say. I think, Madam President, we got a motion on the floor. Why don't you just call?
No, I, I, listen, as Mr. Dill clearly articulated, clearly articulated, this is a situation and a vote here in front of us that, that has far-reaching ramifications. And if you don't understand, we're not going to be able to turn it back. If we put somebody in business.
Not at all, so we'll pass it with a second.
If we put somebody in business here, we're not going to be able to turn it off. So if, if you don't want, these are things that were promised to me and promised to the public, and we don't have it.
We have a report from EDAC. We had an economist come in and give us a report. It's not a survey. It was, it was their opinion. We had their opinion, and we also had the opinion of an economist come and say high 300s, 400,000, a very low estimate based on everything he could base it on, population, medium income, average ticket sale, and so on.
We have, we have, nobody, you have it.
Yeah, you, you were sitting here. You were sitting here and.
Your opinion of what he gave us is very.
It's not my opinion. He stood there and, and gave his path.
He projected the population that would come through the town and applied that to a national statistic of 150 people.
It was a very thorough projection of what he did.
The chairman did a thorough job, but it wasn't.
He talked about the annual population and also the seasonal population, and it did apply to this. That's exactly what it applied to.
And we do not have the opinion of economic development. Did you attend an economic development meeting where it was discussed recently, Mr. DePamp?
Yes, I did.
And what was the outcome?
Hasn't changed. They still think that we should move forward and take a look.
There was a vote of the members of the economic development, and they voted that we should move forward and establish a retail cannabis business?
I believe so, yes.
What do you mean, you believe so? Were you there?
Yeah, I was there.
They studied this for nine months, and they, they're the ones that studied, that also did a study on.
We have, we have the chairman. Could you confirm that? Thank you. All right, I, all right, I want to move on. We don't have the information, right? I want to move on. This is a bad idea for this community. Period.
That's an opinion.
Well, of course it is.
All right, can we take a vote?
Of course it is.
Let's move on.
I am not finished speaking.
I think you've had more than your five minutes, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm an elected member of this body.
Well, you still have an opportunity to comment.
I've been elected, excuse me, I'm not finished. I've been elected by the people of my board to speak and represent for them. Are you telling me I only have five minutes?
You may continue.
To talk about the most important issue we're going to face?
Please continue.
Is that what you said?
Please continue.
Well, I want to clarify that I only have five minutes.
I, but please continue.
Do I have a time limit?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Thank you. This is an issue that, you know, as Mr. Dill has articulated here, you know, we're going to put a retail cannabis in the middle of our business district, right dab in the middle of the business district, whether it's in the ShopRite Shopping Center or in the middle of Route 9 or on MacArthur Boulevard, wherever. It's going to be in the path that we're up, whatever kids are going to walk to school and whatever, kids are going to Five Below and all that. Why we would want to put this in here and create this, the revenue will decline. Let's just say for argument's sake that it is $400,000, which is way too high. It's going to be $400,000 the first year. Then the next retail operation will open in EHT or open somewhere else, and we'll split that, split that take. So we've put $400,000 in our budget. Now, our revenue the next year is 350. Now we have a $50,000 hole in our budget. And that will continue to decline, and, and, and the, and the, the goal of all this, and I'm sure you all agree, that you think that this is going to help revenue. But now we're going to be fighting it all the way down. So I, I think that everyone's got the idea that I'm against this, so I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Dill.
I do, I do have some concerns with the fact that we really haven't received a lot of information from the public. I, I'll be the first one. I'm not going to sit here and say I've talked to hundreds of people in town, okay? Because I haven't about this issue. But the people that I have talked to, and it probably is somewhere between 25 and 50 people, I'll be honest, I have not had any one of them say to me that I think it's a good idea to sell cannabis in Summers Point. There may be people out there that say, yeah, it is okay, but I, they haven't spoken to me. The other thing, too, is the fact that, again, I'll go back to the revenue that we're going to get off of this. Many years ago, probably 20 years ago, we had a grocery receipts tax that we were receiving from the state, okay? And I believe you and Mr. McWiggin sat with our auditor and stated that they have just completely gutted it, okay? And we're not even receiving even close to what, and Mr. Frost was there, too, not even getting close to what we should be getting, and they've thrown a little bit of money, they've thrown a couple bread, bread chips to, to us this year, which is a minimal amount of money. I just, you know, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I don't trust the state that they're going to continue to give us that 2%. They may end up putting a cap on it, okay, like they did the grocery receipts tax, and the next thing you know, they're taking in all the money because they're spending money foolishly, and we're suffering because we're not getting the revenue that we should rightfully get, okay? So I have a concern about. The final thing I'll say is that, you know, we just read a letter from the state, the chief of police, okay? Who's spelling out all the issues associated with having a cannabis store in Summers Point, okay? And I don't know how we can sit here and look at this, this ordinance and say, oh, well, you know, chief, well, you know, the administration of the police department, we really don't care what you think. You know, we're going to pass this because the revenue is the more important thing than what's important to the taxpayers of this community associated with the safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I make a motion to table this ordinance.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Is a motion on the floor already?
Explain the procedure, Dan.
May I have a roll call vote?
Can you, can you comment on the table or not? No, no comment, okay, all right.
May I have a roll call vote? And you're voting for whether or not to table this issue?
Councilmember Bruno?
No.
Councilmember Owen?
I'm going to record and say that what Councilman McWiggin has to say, a lot of speculation, in my opinion, I mean, of course, we all have opinions.
Mr. Owen. Yes or no, whether or not you want to post, you want to table this?
No, no, I do not.
Thank you.
Councilmember DePamples?
No.
Councilmember McCary?
No.
Councilmember McWiggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
No. It's not even.
No. Okay, so we already voted to amend it, so now we're voting on the ordinance, right? On the amended ordinance. The amended ordinance. May I have a roll call vote on the amended ordinance number 19, please?
Councilmember Bruno?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember DePamples?
Yes.
Councilmember McCary?
Yes.
Councilmember McWiggin?
No.
Councilmember Dill?
No.
Council President Johnston?
Yes. Yes. Okay. This was the first reading. The second reading will be. I'm not sure when. At the second reading will be open for public comment.
At the very least, we'll have at least a planning board meeting.
Between.
Right.
I believe the next planning board meeting is.
The 19th, I think, right?
The third, the third Wednesday of August. It's going to be the 16th.
16th?
Mm-hmm, 16th of August.
Okay. Our meeting is the 24th, our next meeting. Okay.
Can they discuss it, and then they, they have to report, make a recommendation back to the governing body? So probably won't get that recommendation until the September meeting? More than likely?
I can't speak for the planning board.
Okay. No, absolutely not, that's for sure.
Okay, ordinance number 20. Ordinance number 20 of 2023, bond ordinance providing for various stormwater utility capital improvements in and by the city of Summers Point in the county of Atlantic, New Jersey appropriating $4,300,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of up to $4,300,000 aggregate principal amount bonds or notes of the city of Summers Point, county of Atlantic, New Jersey to finance the cost thereof.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a first reading for ordinance number 20. Ordinance number 21.
Ordinance number 21 of 2023, an ordinance repealing the entirety of 20200 parking lots municipal.
May I have a motion, please?
Smoozed. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 21, the first reading. We'll move on to resolutions. May I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only. If you wish to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Patricia Pearson, 587, Mark's Road, Summers Point. Resolution 172. Can you tell me what it is?
For our annual, oh, I'm sorry, 172? Oh, that's it.
Boat ramp.
The boat ramp fees for the.
Garvey boat races this coming weekend.
It's for one event this weekend for the Garvey boat races because they have to launch their boats from that ramp.
You're waving them for, for one event only?
Yes.
But do you have boat ramp fees?
We're working on them.
Well, what are you waving then?
Well, hopefully, it will be, it's supposed to be up and running last year, but Mr. Frost is still working on it, yes.
The whole issue is, what if we get the gates working on Thursday, and all of a sudden we have gates there and these people coming in in front of that? This is a, just to make sure.
Because it's this weekend, we don't have another opportunity.
I've had egg on our face.
Okay, so the plan is still to get the toll rates working, charge tolls, right?
Yes.
Because I got phone calls today, the jet skis are all backed up, people want to go in for night and then it's this and that, nobody's charging anybody for anything. So what's the, what is the, is the problem Comcast, or what is the problem?
Right now, it's three parts, one was vandalized, the screen, eating the screen, and then there's another part to test.
You have no idea what the general public feels about this, and if I was you, all of you, I would straighten it out, and I mean it. Thank you for answering this. Motion to close?
Smoozed. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Resolution number 164.
Resolution number 164, 2023, change order one, temporary boiler services.
May I have a motion, please?
Smoozed. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 164 is adopted. Number 165.
Resolution number 165 of 2023, authorizing First Amendment with Atlantic County concerning design, construction, and jurisdictional control of the bike lanes along New York Avenue.
May I have a motion, please?
Smoozed. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 165 is adopted. Number 166.
Resolution number 166 of 2023, authorizing purchase of one jet back equipment, 900 Echo 12-yard truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner through the source well formerly NJPA National Purchasing Program contract for high-pressure jetting, vacuum hydro, excavating, and recycling contract number 101221 SCA for Summers Point Sewer Department.
May I have a motion, please?
Smoozed.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 166 is adopted. Number 167.
Resolution number 167 of 2023, governing body certification of annual audit.
May I have a motion, please?
Smoozed. Second.
Any comments? I just want to comment that we did have another very successful audit, and that is thanks to our administrative staff that does such a great job all year, so this was a very positive audit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 167 is adopted. Number 173.
Resolution number 173 of 2023, resolution authorizing the release of franchise of coastal investments of Summers Point LLC from Summers Point Sewer Utility.
May I have a motion, please?
Smoozed. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 173 is adopted. Number 174.
Resolution number 174, 2023, resolution authorizing a lateral sanitary sewer connection agreement between Coastal Investments of Summers Point LLC and the city of Summers Point and the city of Lynnwood.
May I have a motion, please?
Sammude. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 174 is adopted. The consent agenda, does anyone on council feel that any of these resolutions need to be pulled for discussion on the consent agenda?
Madam President, I would need to recuse myself from 179, so I don't know how you want to deal with that.
Do we just, what do we do, pull it? No? It's on the record that.
On the record, he's not voting on 179.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I miss something? What is 179? I guess I should recuse myself, too, I'm a member of the committee.
Okay, so it's on the record, so we're good? Okay, could I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is adopted. Old business. Anyone have any old business to discuss? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. We have an approval for a social affair permit for Summers Point Historical Society for September 9, 2023, from 12 noon to 6 p.m. at Don F. Kennedy Park for Good Old Days. All the paperwork is in order? Yes, ma'am, anyone have any objection?
And I'll note my recusal on that item as well.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that is approved. We have a request from Christopher, and I apologize, I'm going to mess up the last name, Smazak, to vacate Dobbs Avenue next to B. 17, lot, block 176, lot 1, and do we have a, in your file, you do have a copy of the cycling? It's a paper street? And by the city, and they're asking us to vacate it, I'm going to ask Mr. Smith for his opinion on.
I don't think we ever made a determination as to whether the city owned it, as in spite, we did not, I suspect the city does not own it.
Yeah, it's mostly, it's just a right of way.
Yeah, it's just a right of way, just to make that clear, so it's not owned or shit.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Giving something up on, they're asking for a street to be vacated, since adjacent property owners may be owned out to the middle of the roadway on a street vacation, property on either side would go to the adjacent property owner. This particular paper street leads to the back of our Public Works Department, there's been discussions on expanding our Public Works Department, moving things around the Public Works Department, and so the issue on that aspect is, this Public Works Department might need that in the future. We had an issue with this on West Maryland Avenue, behind the youth center, where it was suggested that the city vacate the roadway, and from Methle Road out to, I guess, to the, where the street actually exists, by the apartments over there, and this body two years ago voted no, because they anticipated that there may be a need for it, so relative to Public Works, there's the issue of whether Public Works would need that, relative to the fact that this property then is abutted also, or the right of way is abutted by the vacant property on MacArthur Boulevard, and I understand, I understand there's been discussions, probably know better than I, Madam President, relative to what's going on with that property over there.
Developer has come to the TRC meetings for, yes.
I don't know whether it's been sold already or not, but ultimately someone, it looks like someone's going to develop it, and that property has been, been hanging around since Sayers' Marco shut down a hundred years ago, it was contaminated, and so the issue is going to be whether or not that property owner may need that, that right of way, and so my recommendation is maybe a premature application, that you don't go the answer to, at least from them, the other issue is whether our Public Works Department, since I've been the solicitor, there's been at least 20 variations of discussions about the Public Works Department doing something with that back parcel, and so I, my recommendation is that you don't vacate it right of way, because that, absolutely, once we vacate it, we don't have it back.
Excuse me, just for clarification, are we, did you do this drawing?
No, the applicant.
No, yeah.
All right, have you verified that this is accurate?
No, I have not received a certified survey.
Just to clarify, are we vacating this triangle, or are we vacating the whole street?
I can't proceed this.
Yeah, that was brought up during TRC meeting, that's, that's the area he's claiming he's maintaining.
He's maintaining the triangle?
Yeah, yeah.
But it, and I'm not putting you on the spot, but could that be accurate, that this is a lot?
I mean, I don't think it's drawn to scale and.
So are we asking, we're asking to vacate that entire paper street, Dobbs Avenue?
This is, yeah.
No, I'm a no vote for that question.
Okay, no, please don't.
I mean, this is just a, having you done my ordinance, this is just a straw, but anyone who thinks we ought to vacate it?
I knew this wasn't your work.
I'm a no vote also, if there's a other use for it, I don't think, or possible other uses for it, I don't think we should be vacating it, anyone else?
I agree we shouldn't, thank you.
Okay, yes. Councilmember Bruno?
No.
Okay.
No.
Mr. McCary?
No.
No.
That was a lot easier.
Yes, it was.
Okay, requests for fireworks display, this is Great Bay?
For Great Bay, yes.
The date is July, oh, did they change the date?
Yes, it's August 26th.
August 26th. And they have all their approvals from the fire marshal and?
They have everything so far, there were nine items that they had to get to me, and they did, however, it was at the last minute, but it was still by the deadline, and so if council wants to approve it, it would have to be contingent upon the police chief's approval and the fire chief's approval, because they haven't had a chance to review all this, and, you know, I don't know if they have any questions or anything else, but as far as administratively, their paperwork is all in order.
Okay, anyone have any objection, contingent on those two approvals?
No.
No.
No, hearing none, okay. Okay, discussion of the bills, Mr. Frost.
Sure, so this evening, we have a bill listing the amount of $3,81,543.67, we have a record of payments in the amount of $1,732,803.74, and an additional bill list in the amount of $8,000.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment.
Hi, Craig Schenk with the Sentinel Newspaper. During the last meeting, I was, made some comments and jest that reflected poorly on Councilman McWigan, and I'm here to apologize, I'm sorry, Sean, for doing so, I'd also like to apologize for the public, to the public, for my careless comments, and I'd also like to apologize to the committee members who were here, and the mayor, and the professionals for speaking out of turn during that meeting.
Mr. Schenk?
Thank you.
I'm very fond of you, and I'm fond of your newspaper, that is completely unnecessary, no offense was taken, I, as much as everybody knows me, I'm a kid or two, so don't worry about that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Carol Zerby, 1414 Massachusetts Avenue. This situation, maybe to some people, will seem like small potatoes, in thinking about everything else you've discussed tonight, but it's very important to me as a retired teacher, and the issue is navigating our streets, the kids and the adults, on the electric assist bikes, the electric throttle bikes, or scooters, no helmets, zipping through stop signs, they don't realize that they're a vehicle, the ones on the scooter, well, both, actually, so, you know, what can we do about this, and they're wearing earbuds, or phones, and they're not paying attention, sometimes they even antagonize you a little bit, they might be in the middle of the street, so the one solution I thought of, and I don't know if this would require the police, would be maybe try two cameras in the city that could record this, at intersections, like the one intersection right near me is Ambler and Massachusetts, and they whip through the air, you know, at night sometimes, with, maybe you're lucky if they have any kind of reflector, anyway, I just want to throw it out, it's for something to maybe talk about, think about, or else maybe direct it to the police. It concerns me because one of these kids is going to be hit.
I think we can discuss that at our next public safety, we have a public safety meeting coming up, so we'll definitely make sure that gets discussed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Don, Macro losey 123, Higbee Ave, I want to know what the ruling is on electric low-speed vehicles, do you guys have anything?
We are not.
Why not? Just curious.
You have an ordinance that includes them, that has some time to go, the police department's investigation and recommendation, that's all.
So why are they allowed in Ocean City, but not in Summers Point?
We need the town to pass its own ordinance, in this town, there's certain limitations that are statutorily imposed by the state, can't go over, I think it's 35 miles an hour.
Well, all the back streets are 25, though. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
But we have MacArthur Boulevard, we have Maze Lane Road, we have Route 9, they're not allowed to go over those roadways, and they're not allowed to cross over those roadways, and since we have so many roadways in town, the speed limit exceeded, it was believed at the time that it was better not to have these type of vehicles on the roadway, because it's heard, essentially the same reasons, young lady, before you spoke about the electric bikes, it was supposed to be a safety concern, and trying to control them from crossing.
So is there any, like, ruling that's going to change on it?
I'm just a solicitor, this is the body.
Well, that's what I'm asking, so.
And there's nothing on the table right now, this has been discussed before, it's probably been discussed, maybe a fifth or sixth time, I actually keep, I think, well, I lost my one portfolio, I used to have it in my portfolio, yep, here it is, low speed.
Because, I mean, they're regulated, they're all allowed in New Jersey, I mean, this is like the only town, one of your police officers told me this is the only town, and he wishes that this town was allowed, too, so that's why I'm here, to find out what you guys think on it, so, I don't know.
I've got a councilwoman on here, whose husband spent $15,000 on it, and because of where they were, they realized they couldn't go off.
Yeah, but all the back roads, Higbee and all them, they're all 25, none of the, none of the big roads need to be traveled if you're on the back road, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, what the issue is, or what we can do, I mean, they're safe, they're eco-friendly, I mean, you take a gas truck, or a gas car, or diesel truck, you're wasting all the, you know, gas, it's not eco-friendly, electric, you know, vehicle, it saves, you know, electricity, you know, you, I don't, I'm just asking people's input on it, I don't know, so.
If anyone on council wants to.
Madam President, I'll offer my opinion, I would not want our first responders to roll up on an accident between a truck and a golf cart. You know, this was a study done over 10, 12 years ago now, that, you know, was police recommendations and done, and let's just say, for argument's sake, if we're going to engage in a conversation, that you're on Higbee, and you get in your golf cart, where are you going?
Right up the street. Right down the road, make a right or make a left, nowhere else.
All right, human nature would be for you to go somewhere, I mean, you know, to me, it's not appropriate for our town, so.
Madam President, I got a comment on this, so we have these bikes that can go up to 35, maybe 45 miles an hour, they're zipping all over the place, and we have golf carts that are electric that we're saying can't go, and I would sense my ability to ride a two-wheeler going 45 miles an hour, I'm kind of, I feel safer in a golf cart now.
Exactly.
I realize that we've had this ordinance, and there's something there, so this is something to be discussed, because when this was done with the golf cart, but since then, now we have these electric bikes running around the place, we've got to look at that also as a danger, and as Mr. McWigan pointed out, you know, they're dangerous, especially, they're all black, you're riding at night, a car hits them, I don't want to see one of our emergency people pulling a kid out from underneath the car, so I understand your point, all right?
And just so you know, the golf cart is all street legal, it has lights, it has wipers, it has everything, so a bike doesn't have that.
I understand that.
We did, we did discuss this, it's not only an ordinance, it's been on the books for a while, but we also, it did come up, I guess, two, two years ago, maybe, and we did discuss it, and it was voted down then, again.
Yeah, so is there anything we can do to get it revoted, or no?
I, I agree with Mr. McWigan, that I don't think it's a good thing for the city of Summers Point, I don't, can't go that far, but we know people are going to try, so I just, I.
But you guys think it's okay to get cannabis in our, in our town?
It's already here, so.
I'll say this, that's apples and oranges, let's not go down that, I appreciate that, Madam President, please, let me just make a point, I appreciate that she agrees with me, I also, I want to get rid of electric bikes, but, you know.
Like, you guys want to generate money for the Summers Point, but then you can sit there and say you're going to generate $400,000 in the pot selling, but then you could sell a Summers Point low-speed vehicle tagged for 50 bucks or 100 bucks, and you can generate money.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, that's, if someone on council wishes to bring it to council as a discussion, they can certainly do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, Maureen Helbig, 106 East Dawes Avenue. I attend council meetings because I'm very interested in what happens in the city. On July 7, I was on the live stream for the council meeting, and, and I watched for half an hour how awkward that was, that multiple councilmen did not show up, and it was a no-call and no-show, and obviously, tonight, perhaps because of such issues that we're not ready to be discussed, but then, at least just call off the meeting, you know, don't waste everybody's time, but here we are now, it's, you guys have a very, very difficult, contentious issue to discuss, first I've seen in a long time, this, this controversial and difficult, and I wish you very, you know, a lot of deep breathing and work on your research, but I'd also like to say, it would be, it's disappointing to see the fracturing here tonight, and the aggressiveness, and I would like to see you all try to work a little harder at using your collective professional experiences, I'm sure in your business, you've all had to deal with a lot of problem solving, so you are being called on for this issue, to use your problem-solving tools and work together, and that's what I'm going to ask you to do, thank you.
Thank you.
Richcroft, Berlin, New Jersey, happy to see that finally got the ordinance in some kind of shape that, for cannabis, that you could vote on it, I'm unclear with the timeframe, is it going for second reading at the next meeting?
We have to wait for a response from the planning board, and their next meeting is the August 14, or August 16, they have 30 days to respond, if they do respond before our next meeting, then it'll be on the agenda, if not, it'll be on the September agenda.
Are they on board, I mean, have they been cooperating?
They, they can't really do anything until tonight, until after tonight, all right.
Right, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, and Solicitor Smith, it sounds like you got a whole education this last six months. Anyway, the.
It's, it's, we're going uncharged.
Yeah.
I can get it.
Good luck with getting through to the CRC, and you are going, it sounds like you're going the right way too. Some of the solicitors who already, you know, manage cannabis licenses. You know, I usually, you know, reach out to them, because you can't get a hold of the CRC, they're like the untouchable.
You didn't hear any of us complain about the state of?
No.
No, no. And then, the last thing is the proposed ordinance, how, how would I get a copy of that? Through the clerk, I mean, I don't have a problem.
Yep, yep.
I know there's going to be some tweaking, but at least.
I'm actually going to give her my copy with the, with the.
Sure.
And then I can email her my, my, I can email it to you, I can do whatever we want. She's not going to be here tomorrow, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's no real hurry.
We'll wait till next week, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Patricia Pearson, 587 Marxard. First of all, if I wanted cannabis, I wouldn't care if I had to go to Egger Harbor Township or Atlantic City out by the airport, I'd go. I'd rather keep Summers Point A1, like Avalon, Stone Harbor, and Ocean City and Lockport, that's what I would rather do. But that's only an opinion. I want to ask about the sewer bond. Is, is the revenue that you take in going to offset the sewer bond?
The sewer utility is self-liquidating.
Say what?
It is self-liquidating, this is.
It is, in the record, it is, right?
Yeah, but you, this is for stormwater utility, this is different, there's stormwater, then there's sewers, they're two different things.
All right, all right, I'll have to think about that and ask again. Are the sewer bills going to go up with buying the new truck and the bond and everything? Can the people look forward to higher sewer bills?
The sewer bills are set for this year, they're not changing this year.
Okay. All right, and are you watching the spending?
Always.
All right, thank you.
Hi, just like to introduce myself, Jim Delkane, my wife Jennifer Delkane. We're, we're from Gallaway Township, we're 40-year residents with Atlantic County. We recently received our cannabis approval for a license, and I just want to thank the board for putting the time and effort in, and, you know, really trying to consider this and work it out properly. We worked with a health, health and wellness company for 10 years, and we're very interested in Summers Point, and just want to thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
Summued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Frost, you can pay the bills. Any further comments from the governing body?
Yes, Council President, I would just like to have the, ask the city clerk to put on, in the minutes, the letter that was sent by the Chief of Police to this council, and it's, and it's entirely.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Thank you, everyone.